Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Patty, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Marino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods? Councilmember Morciano?
Here.
Councilmember Lane?
Here.
Councilmember Lit?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No, ma'am.
Do we have any announcements and presentations?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we're moving along great. We only have thirty-seven things. Items of resident interest and board committee reports. Okay, Carl, you said you don't have anything to say, so we'll skip you.
Well, you guys are gonna say it four other times, so there's what's the, you know...
Mark, how about you?
Just some typical meetings, North County Neighborhood Coalition, Economic Forum. I went to the rec soccer opening day. That was fun, seeing all the kids running around. Chamber breakfast, I went to the BDB lunch today. Actually, today's lunch was probably the most informative lunch that I had been to in a long, long time, discussing about the future of immigration, the future of demographics in this country. It was a pretty amazing discussion that I'd love to chat sometime, but not now. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
That's it? Matthew?
Okay, some of the events that I attended during the course of the month included the BDB Annual Economic Development Update, the Fire Chiefs Association of Palm Beach County 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony to honor our police and our firefighters, our own Major Paul Rogers gave a beautiful speech, and Captain Steen Erickson did an exceptional job as the Honor Guard Commander. Went to a meeting of the Economic Forum where they discussed the state of ethics, went to a meeting of the North County Neighborhood Coalition, the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce Breakfast, the Business Development Board Luncheon with Rochelle and Mark today, and finally to Tom Dorita's Celebration Tonight to celebrate a truly extraordinary person who does just wonderful philanthropic things in our community, and it was a pleasure to be there to honor him.
With really nice cars, too. Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, very cars, and we had fun.
Rochelle?
First off, I would like to wish all of our Jewish residents and their families a very happy and healthy New Year, Lashanatova to everybody, and it's been a very, very busy month since our last meeting, and a lot of the things I did were different than my colleagues, actually. I'm inspired every day by the silent heroes that are at work in our community, and I think they need to be noticed and lauded. They sometimes get lost with all the other noise that we have every day, so I may go into a few details more than they did, but on September 12th, I had my first Leadership Palm Beach County Education Day. It was Civics and Government Day. Highlights of that day were a visit to the county's planning and zoning department and a presentation by the Economic Council of the Palm Beaches, and I want to congratulate new CEO and President Michelle Jacobs. September 13th, the Business Development Board Luncheon and Economic Update. It was evaluating Palm Beach County's workforce with an overview of the Workforce Skills Gap Study, and President Parker of Palm Beach State College, along with Dr. Fanoi, the Superintendent of Schools, and Kimberly Lee, President of Kaiser, provided insight about Palm Beach County's current and future workforce. September 14th was the High Balls and Hibiscus fundraiser event for the Jupiter Hospital Foundation. I did twelve hours of continuing pharmacy education at Nova one weekend and attended the ribbon cutting for the Great Greek Restaurant in Legacy Place. September 24th, we had the Forum Club with New York Times Magazine Chief National Correspondent and bestselling author Mark Leibovich, who discussed his foray deep inside the politics of the NFL, and that was very interesting. September 25th was the Leadership Palm Beach County Luncheon Learn on Home Rule. State Senator Bobby Powell, Wellington Mayor Ann Gerwig, and WGI Representative Brian Lamott were the panel for that. And the NCNC Meeting at Mirasol with the guest speaker from One Hundred Thousand Friends of Florida, talking about responsible growth and development in the state and how development in our state's gonna affect our water supply and our water resources, which was interesting in light of what the council's been working on. There was also a representative from Bright Line discussing the trains' plans for the future. On September 26th was the Mayor's Breakfast sponsored by the Palm Beach North Chamber, and I would definitely like to suggest a Mayor's Comedy Night because the comedic talent of the North County Mayors is definitely worth showcasing. They were quite funny. League of Cities Luncheon and Education Event on Amendment One, the Homestead Exemption Amendment, I want to remind everybody, is going to cost the county more than thirty million in its first year, and the City of Palm Beach Gardens, two million the first year. It's not a tax cut, it's a tax shift, and it's going to leave millions of hard-working homeowners and small businesses with a bigger share of the tax burden. September 27th was Leadership Palm Beach County Breakthroughs Follow-Up Breakfast. There were three different challenges that a hundred days we had to make happen. I worked on the Mental Health First Aid Program. We got a hundred HR professionals to sign up for the Acclaim Mental Health First Aid Program, and our HR Administrator Cheryl's gonna be taking that program, which will seek to connect Palm Beach County's mental health organizations with employers to improve employee wellness and productivity. And then we had Legislative Day at the 2-1-1 Crisis Center, which it's absolutely amazing what twenty employees can do to change the lives of so many people in our community for the better. Yesterday was the Homeless Coalition of Palm Beach County's Annual Senator Philip D. Lewis Center Luncheon, honoring members of our community who've gone above and beyond fighting to end homelessness in the county. The keynote speaker was Florida State Senator Darrell Rousseau. He told a moving story about his life of addiction, alcoholism, and homelessness before receiving a hand up that would lead him on his journey to the Florida Senate. And today, the Business Development Board Luncheon with Dr. James Johnson filled the whole program out. He's a distinguished professor of strategy and entrepreneurship and Director of the Urban Investment Strategy Center in Chapel Hill. He gave a riveting presentation on our changing demographics as a country and a state and how it's necessary for businesses to begin to adapt now to the changing workforce diversity that we're starting to experience, especially here in Florida. So, that was the month.
Thank you, Rochelle. Mark always gets nervous when I go like this, and there's thirty-seven meetings, over thirty-seven meetings on there, but just some of the highlights, and Patty, you have a copy of this, and it becomes public record anyway, so everybody wants to see. How many meetings we all attend, you're welcome to it. But we did kick the month off with the Mayor's Luncheon in support of the Literacy Coalition, and I hope all of you will join us on October 25th as we read for the record. I know that the council will be at their Riverside Enrichment Center in the morning, reading to the kids, and we look forward to it every year. I did a presentation at the NCNC Meeting, attended the League of Cities Board Meeting, Membership Meeting, District One Luncheon, and also attended the Transportation Committee Meeting, which I now chair, I don't know how that happened. Presented at the Palm Beach North Breakfast before ours, Mayor's Breakfast, which was, as Rochelle alluded to, quite interesting. We have some comedy talent on the panel there, and I think some were funnier than others. I had a Forum Club Board Meeting, Luncheon with Rochelle at the Forum Club Luncheon with Mark Leibovich. Interesting Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council Board Meeting. I presented to the Realtors Investment Club, the Jupiter Tequesta Hope Sound Board of Realtors, and the Miami Palm Beach County Realtors Association. Attended the Business Development Board Economic Development Update along with several of our other council members. Pardon me, I have a lingering cough. And attended the Business Development Board Annual Gala. There were two Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency Transition Steering Committee Meetings that I attended, plus a Strategic Planning Committee Meeting, plus the monthly Board Meeting. Met with the Governor, attended the Palm Beach North Economic Development Meeting, hosted, this was fun and very special, actually, hosted the Legal Aid Society's Guardian Advocacy Project at City Hall, the Police Department and the Fire Department, and these young adults who are struggling to be in a normal world were given the opportunity to be normal, so it was very nice. Thank you all to the staff, you did a wonderful job, and I've got many kudos on it, so thank you all. Presented to the Bay Hill Property Owners Association Board Meeting, attended with Rochelle the 2-1-1 Legislative Day, presented to Suits for Seniors at Dwyer High School, which is a mentoring program for high school seniors who are trying to really learn the rights and the wrongs and a better way to live life, so that was always fun to present to them. And Great Greek Ribbon Cutting, the food was good. Anybody wants to go, it's Legacy Place. Attended the soccer with Mark and lots of other constituent services meeting, and I'm done. That's all. Okay.
Can I add one more thing, since you mentioned the Literacy Coalition?
No, you're done.
It looks like the Literacy Coalition is asking the public for submissions of what makes each city, town, or village the best place to live in Palm Beach County for their Best Municipality Ever contest. So I will make sure Candace has the information. Deadline, I think, is October 19th, and maybe somebody would consider writing an article on Palm Beach Gardens and see if we can win this thing.
Thank you, Rochelle. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, I have no, all the common cards I have are agenda items, so I have nothing that is not on the agenda, so we can, we can go right to City Manager's Report.
In consideration of the lengthy agenda you have in front of you, I'm gonna forego a report this evening.
Thank you. Okay, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm gonna pull Item D.
Okay, may I have a motion in a second to pass the Consent Agenda less Item D?
I'll make a motion to pass the Consent Agenda less Item D.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, so since we have polled an item from the Consent Agenda, may I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 66-2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, delegating full settlement authority in the matter of Sears, Roebuck &amp; Company versus Forbes, Cohen, Florida Properties LP and City of Palm Beach Gardens, 502014CA0114945XXXXMBAG to the City Manager and the City Attorney jointly, further authorizing the City Manager and City Attorney to do all things deemed necessary and prudent to effectuate settlement and specifically authorizing the City Manager and City Attorney to execute any and all documents and/or instruments necessary to effectuate settlement of the dispute between the parties relating to the amount of attorney's fees Sears is seeking to recover from the city. This delegation of authority to settle the subject disputes shall not constitute and is in no manner, direction to settle, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 66-2018.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Ryan, and Max, do you want to lead, or do you want me to? How do you want it? Okay. Okay, I pulled this resolution for two reasons. First, because it involves a potentially large expenditure of taxpayer funds. It's my understanding that Sears is demanding that the city pay Sears over $2 million in attorney's fees. And second, I pulled the resolution because I was afraid that the negotiated settlement would be subject to a confidentiality provision, and I felt that would be inappropriate to hide the payment of a potentially large expenditure of taxpayer funds from our taxpayer resident. After consideration of all the relevant arguments, and we discussed a lot of them, I support the passage of Resolution 66. I believe that the City Council should empower the City Manager with settlement authority to negotiate a resolution with Sears, and I believe that by giving the City Manager full authority to reach a settlement, it'll enable the city to elicit the best and final possible offer from Sears. Additionally, should the city reach a settlement during negotiations, the settlement will not evaporate in the interim while both sides seek approval from their respective governing bodies. There's an old saying in the law, "The time kills deals." Spoken quite simply, if our City Manager has full authority when he enters into the negotiation, he'll be in the best position to get the best possible deal on behalf of the city, and will save the city money. As to my second concern, I was advised by our City Attorney and by our City Manager that the amount of money that our taxpayers will be paying to resolve this issue cannot and will not be hidden from the public in a confidentiality provision from Sears, and for these reasons, I again move that we pass Resolution 66-2018, subject to the condition that the terms of the settlement will be disclosed to and will be transparent to the public.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, before we go on to the next part of our agenda, I do want to make a recognition. There's a lot of pink in the audience tonight. I'm wearing so-called pink, but this is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I just wanted to say we did pass the proclamation, because we have a long agenda, we're not gonna read it, but we do recognize it, and thank you for being here this evening. And if you all don't know, this lovely young lady here, Kate Watt, who's in the front of the room, she runs the Susan G. Coleman Foundation in our local area, so Kate, you're doing a wonderful job, and thank you. And her right-hand gal Denise Mariani, thank you very much. All right, I went off script, sorry. Okay, public hearings. Okay, I'm gonna take a deep breath because I got a lot to read. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance 12-2018, the Second Reading and Adoption Planned Unit Development PUD rezoning for Carlton Oaks. Resolution 27-2018, planned unit development PUD rezoning for Carlton Oaks. Ordinance 14-2018, second reading and adoption planned unit development rezoning for Osprey Isles. Resolution 28-2018, planned unit development PUD rezoning for Osprey Isles. Ordinance 16-2018, second reading and adoption rezoning for the Star of David Cemetery. Ordinance 18-2018, second reading and adoption planned unit development PUD rezoning for the Northlake CLF parcel. Resolution 30-2018, planned unit development PUD rezoning for the Northlake CLF parcel. Ordinance 22-2018, second reading and adoption Bonnet Hun Club PUD site plan approval. Resolution 58-2018, Bonnet Hun Club rezone. Resolution 61-2018, site plan amendment for Alton Town Center. Resolution 64-2018, approval of a miscellaneous petition for Alton Town Center Master Sign Program. This means that the City Council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are on the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The Council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witness, or witnesses, who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
All righty. So we will start with Item A. By the way, the notice to the public, there is a sign-up sheet at the front table for anyone wanting to receive information from the Department of Economic Opportunities. May I please have the clerk read this very long Ordinance 11 title?
Ordinance 11 in 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a large-scale amendment to its comprehensive plan, future land use map, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 et sequintes Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPMA-18-01-000022 in order to change the land use designation of 142.84 acres from Palm Beach County Residential Low, one unit per acre RL1, to Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low RL for 59.74 acres, Palm Beach Gardens Conservation CONS for 79.34 acres, and Palm Beach Gardens Public P for 3.76 acres following annexation. The subject property being located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Memorial Park Road, approximately 3.65 miles west of the Beeline Highway, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and other reviewing agencies, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, no. There have been no changes on Ordinance 11 since first reading, and if I may, I would like, since members of the public may be here this evening who didn't have the opportunity to attend the first meeting, I do want to clarify that this ordinance, Ordinance 11, in addition to Ordinance 12, Resolution 27, Ordinance 13, Ordinance 14, Resolution 28, Ordinance 15, Ordinance 16, Ordinance 17, Ordinance 18, and Resolution 30 are all being processed at the same time. What they are doing is they are assigning a city land use designation and a city zoning designation to the recently annexed parcels for Carlton Oaks, Osprey Isles, the CLF, and all of the parcels that were in that area. We are providing a city designation for zoning and land use as required under Chapter 171, which is state law, which is a necessary action that the city must take per state law. The city is providing no more, no less. We are not proposing any changes. All staff has proposed is the exact same land use designation that is most comparable to the county's designation, and we are also honoring all of the existing documents that the county has provided us, which were the previously approved site plans. So for the public to understand a little bit more, there's a lot of, there are many ordinances on tonight's agenda, but there are no proposed changes for any of these sites. And also, if I may, there are no proposed changes on any of the aforementioned resolutions and ordinances since first reading, so they all remain consistent for second reading.
Thank you, Natalie. And we're gonna go through this in about a year with Bay Hill.
Correct. Any annexation that comes in has a county land use designation and has a zoning, so it's required that any parcel, whether it's voluntarily annexed or involuntary annexed, requires that designation to be provided. So you're exactly right, Bay Hill still has a county land use designation, it too will be coming forward in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I don't think we need a presentation, and I don't have, I don't have any comments from the public on this one, so may I get a motion in a second, please?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 11-2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Ordinance 12 and its companion item, Resolution 27.
Ordinance 12-2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property, such property being comprised of 142.84 acres in size, more or less, and located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Memorial Park Road, approximately 3.65 miles west of the Beeline Highway, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be rezoned from Palm Beach County Residential Plan Unit Development PUD to Palm Beach Gardens Plan Unit Development PUD with underlying zoning designations of Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low RL3 for 59.74 acres, Palm Beach Gardens Conservation CONS for 79.34 acres, and Palm Beach Gardens Public and Institutional P/II for 3.76 acres, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Resolution 27-2018 is a companion item to Ordinance 12-2018 and will require council action. Resolution 27-2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Carlton Oaks Plan Unit Development PUD consisting of 142.84 acres, more or less, located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Memorial Park Road, approximately 3.65 miles west of the Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing, and would anybody like to declare an ex parte on this? Anybody have any expertises? No? Okay. Nothing has changed. I don't believe we need a presentation. I don't have any cards on 12 or 27, so I will ask for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion for Ordinance...
On Ordinance 12.
Yeah. I'll motion Ordinance 12-2018 on second reading.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And may I have a motion in a second on Resolution 27, please?
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 27.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're on to Ordinance 13. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 13-2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a large-scale amendment to its comprehensive plan, future land use map, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 et sequintes Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPMA-18-01-000024 in order to change the land use designation on 101.36 acres from Palm Beach County Residential Low, one unit per acre RL1, to Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low RL. Following annexation, the subject property being located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, approximately four miles west of the Beeline Highway, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for the transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and other reviewing agencies, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-up sheet at the front table for anyone wanting to receive information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. I'll open the hearing, and since we know that nothing's changed and we don't need a presentation, may I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion that we pass Ordinance 13.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Ordinance 14 and its companion Resolution 28.
Ordinance 14-2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property, such property being comprised of 101.36 acres in size, more or less, and located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, approximately four miles west of the Beeline Highway, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be rezoned from Palm Beach County Residential Plan Unit Development PUD to Palm Beach Gardens Plan Unit Development PUD with an underlying zoning designation of Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low RL3, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Resolution 28 is a companion item to Ordinance 14-2018 and will require council action. Resolution 28-2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Osprey Isles Plan Unit Development PUD consisting of 101.36 acres, more or less, located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, approximately four miles west of the Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Okay. Any expertises? No? All right. Nothing's changed. We don't need a presentation. May I have a... I have a motion and a second, please?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 14, 2018.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second for Resolution 28, please?
I move that we adopt Resolution 28, 2018.
I'll second.
Thank you. We don't need a presentation. May I have--so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Now we are on Ordinance 15, Item E. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 15, 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a large-scale amendment to its comprehensive plan, future land use map, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 et sequintes Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPMA-18-01-000025 in order to change the land use designation on 30.15 acres from Palm Beach County Institutional (INST) to Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low (RL) following annexation. The subject property being located approximately 0.07 miles north of Northlake Boulevard approximately 3.65 miles west of the Beeline Highway, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity (DEO) and other reviewing agencies, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-up sheet at the front table for anyone wanting to receive information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. May I ask for a motion and a second, please?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 15, 2018.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, on to Ordinance 16. May I have the clerk read the title?
Ordinance 16, 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property, such property being comprised of 30.15 acres in size, more or less, and located approximately 0.07 miles north of Northlake Boulevard on the west side of Memorial Park Road approximately 3.65 miles west of the Beeline Highway, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be rezoned from Palm Beach County Institutional and Public Facility with a conditional overlay zone to Palm Beach Gardens Residential Low (RL3), providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. I will open the hearing. Ask for any expertises? Seeing none? May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll make a motion and move Ordinance 16, 2018 on second reading.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Okay, on to Ordinance 17.
Ordinance 17, 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a small-scale amendment to its comprehensive plan, future land use map, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 et sequintes Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPSS-18-01-00009 in order to change the land use designation on 9.88 acres from Palm Beach County Commercial Low Office (HIGH) residential, eight dwelling units per acre, CL-0/8 to Palm Beach Gardens Residential Medium (RM) for 8.26 acres, and Palm Beach Gardens Professional Office (PO) for 1.62 acres following annexation. The subject property being located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Memorial Park Road approximately 3.65 miles west of the Beeline Highway, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity (DEO), providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-up sheet at the front table for anyone wanting to receive information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
Thank you. Give that lady some water. I'll open the hearing, please. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to move Ordinance 17.
Second.
Everybody turn your phones off, please. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to Ordinance 18 and its companion Resolution 30.
Ordinance 18, 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning real property, such property being comprised of 9.88 acres in size, more or less, and located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Memorial Park Road approximately 3.65 miles west of the Beeline Highway, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be rezoned from the Palm Beach County Multiple Use Plan Development (MPUD) to Palm Beach Gardens Plan Unit Development (PUD) with an underlying zoning designation of Palm Beach Gardens Professional Office (PO) for 1.62 acres and Residential Medium (RM) for 8.26 acres, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Resolution 30, 2018, is a companion item to Ordinance 18, 2018, and will require council action. Resolution 30, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Northlake Congregate Living Facility (CLF) Plan Unit Development (PUD) consisting of 9.88 acres, more or less, located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Northlake Boulevard and Memorial Park Road approximately 3.65 miles west of the Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Wow. All right, I will open the hearing. Expertises?
None.
Okay. No presentations. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll motion Ordinance 18, 2018 on second reading.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second on Resolution 30, please?
I move that we adopt Resolution 30, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. We're on to something new. May I have the clerk read the title for Ordinance 19?
Ordinance 19, 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development Regulations of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, at Article 5 supplementary district regulations at Division 6 Public Places by adopting a new subdivision 2 placement of memorials and monuments on city property, providing for definitions, applications, and review process, further providing requirements for the financing, installation, ownership, and maintenance of memorials and monuments, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development Regulations shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. And staff, I'm sure, have some presentation on this one?
We do. Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Natalie Crowley. I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning. I'm joined here by Alicia Sanders, and we are here to present staff's presentation of monuments and memorials into the city's Code of Ordinances, and I do have a brief presentation. This is a city-initiated request to provide for an entirely new section in the city's Code of Ordinances for the purpose of providing a process for proposing a monument and/or memorial to be installed on public property. Currently, the city has no process in place. We are proposing a policy governing monuments and memorials in order to provide clear and objective standards and a fair process in order to respond to various requests from the members of the public to really just have proper policies and procedures in place for any of our public property. The elements that are proposed to be included in this ordinance, the ordinance itself is proposed to be included in Chapter 78, which is the city's Land Development Regulations. We have identified one park, which I'll go over in just a little bit more detail later in the presentation, which is the city's existing Lake Catherine Park. We are providing for definitions, criteria, and actual review process. Also, we are addressing the financing and the installation and the maintenance. The process is laid out all before you on the screen here. I'm not going to read every single step, but essentially, the application is submitted to the Planning and Zoning Department, and through P&amp;Z's process, which we do for all development review applications, we coordinate through our DRC, which is our Development Review Committee, consisting of all of the different departments who are impacted, such as fire, and police, and engineering, and building, just to list a few. Once DRC has signed off and determined the application to be technically sufficient, then that is moved forward to the AIPP Advisory Review Board, then it moves on to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, then it moves on to P&amp;Z for their review, and finally, City Council has the ultimate authority to approve any proposed monument. I do want to note that in AIPP-- first of all, DRC is a publicly noticed meeting. AIPP, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, P&amp;Z, and of course, City Council are all opportunities for the public to participate. So all of those meetings are noticed, agendas are preposted, so that is ample opportunity and that was integrated into the design for this process to provide as much opportunity as possible for the public to contribute input into any proposed monument or memorials. So as I mentioned previously, the site that staff has identified for the monuments and memorials at this time consists of Lake Catherine Park. This is an existing city site. It is located really just north of Northlake Boulevard, west of MacArthur. As you can see, the site is laid out on an aerial before you. It has a number of very attractive and passive facilities, such as a boat ramp for the toy boaters that use that lake. There's canoeing and kayak access, fishing. There's a very nice multipurpose trail. There is existing parking, and the site is also very close to several schools in the area. So this program could work very harmoniously with educational programs, thinking of future monuments or memorials to be located there in the future. This is a concept that staff has created in order to address future requests. It includes a passive trail, which is in addition to the existing trail, with several sites identified where future monuments or memorials could go. And of course, all the proposals and any proposals would be vetted thoroughly through our process before anything was proposed. These are some existing photos of the Lake Catherine site. It's a very lovely park, and as you can see here, the existing city's big program, which is Buy into the Gardens, is not being replaced. In fact, it's very complimentary, and that, again, speaks to why the Lake Catherine site was selected, because there is already many trees with small monuments and dedications that's on-site today. So people already come to the park today for passive use and recognize some of these smaller monuments that are in place. And this, yet again, is just another photo looking west and northwest of the lake, and that's Lake Catherine in the distance. This was brought before the Planning and Zoning and Appeals Board, and it was recommended unanimously for approval on September 12, and staff is recommending approval of Ordinance 19 on first reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no comment cards on this one. I think I missed one. So I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second, please?
I'll make a motion to--
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 19, 2018 on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's great.
I think it's wonderful.
It's beautiful. It's like in your Central Park. It'll be a great way to have our residents put monuments, and thank you to staff for putting together such a great plan. When you guys presented that to us a few months back, I thought it was a great, great idea. It's a great way to build community in our city, and thank you for putting it out there. And then, of course, we're going to ask our residents to put forth some ideas for some monuments that we can place. Thanks.
I think we actually already have two people that have already voiced some interest in different memorials, so thank you for doing this. All right, so I think we're all in accord, so may--all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Let's see. Ordinance 20, second reading and adoption for Carl's Plaza.
Ordinance 20, 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, annexing pursuant to a petition for voluntary annexation a parcel of real property comprising of a total of 5.74 acres, more or less, located on the southeast corner of US Highway 1 and Juno Road, approximately 0.5 miles north of the intersection of PGA Boulevard and US Highway 1 in Palm Beach County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, declaring that the voluntary annexation petition bears the signature of the owner of the real property annexed hereby, amending Article 2 of the city charter by redefining the corporate limits, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of State, the Florida Governor's Office, and Palm Beach County, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. And has anything changed?
There are no changes since first reading. Thank you.
Anyone need an additional presentation? We all good? Okay. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I move that we adopt Ordinance 20, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Ordinance 22 and its companion Resolution 58.
Ordinance 22, 2018, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of real property totaling 6.78 acres in size, more or less, and located on the south side of Hood Road between Florida's Turnpike and Jog Road to be known as the Bonnet Hunt Club Plan Unit Development (PUD), providing that these parcels of real property, as more particularly described herein, shall be assigned a city zoning designation of Plan Unit Development (PUD) overlay with an underlying zoning designation of Residential Low 3 (RL3), providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and for other purposes. Resolution 58, 2018, is a companion item to Ordinance 22, 2018, and will require council action. Resolution 58, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the Bonnet Hunt Club Plan Unit Development (PUD) site plan, consisting of 24 single-family units on 6.78 acres located on the south side of Hood Road between Florida's Turnpike and Jog Road, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Are we good? Okay. I will open the hearing. Any expertises?
I've spoken to the people over at Mirabella.
As have I. Spoke to Steve Matheson. I spoke to Don Herring, and also to John Gustella.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've just spoke to Steve Matheson.
All right. Has anything changed? Do we have any new information since the first reading?
No changes.
All right.
Madam Mayor, if I may, yes, I agree that there have been no changes on the ordinance. I do--I would like to provide a quick update from staff's perspective, because there has been continuing and ongoing discussion regarding the buffer and the buffer issues. There was a lot of comment in the first reading, and after the first reading occurred, there was continuing discussion between the Mirabella POA and the Mirasol Master POA and the applicant. That coordination occurred. The city was brought in the loop on the coordination. It was expressed to the city that they wished to continue that dialogue, so there was a productive meeting that was set up on October 2nd just this week, just to help facilitate the discussion regarding the ongoing coordination. Of course, when it came to the city's attention that the buffer was not in compliance, code enforcement was notified, and action was issued to the Mirasol Master Association to bring that buffer into compliance. And the productive meeting, which occurred on October 2nd, was very good. It brought to light all the issues that need to occur in order to bring the buffer into compliance, and the Mirasol Master was extremely cooperative in assisting ideas in order to bring the buffer into compliance. And so city staff, this is going to be an ongoing issue, and city staff is always happy to coordinate whatever process needs to occur in order to just bring that buffer back into compliance. But I do want to emphasize that this has nothing to do with the resolution and the ordinance before you. The buffer is the buffer that is owned by the Mirasol Master POA, which of course serves as the PCD buffer, and it also is immediately--it is--
serves as the P C D buffer, and it also is immediately, it is immediately part of the Mirabella development. So, I do want to note that, that there is ongoing, there is ongoing coordination, and we are happy to assist in that.
Thank you. Nicole, do you have anything to add?
Nicole Plunkett with Kotler and Herring. I have been sworn in. I agree with that 100%. Not only did we all come together and meet with the city this past Tuesday, but we had a preliminary meeting at Lang Management Offices with the Mirabella representatives as long, along with the Mirasol Master Association to facilitate those conversations, and to make sure that they know that we're completely on board with, with coordinating through the construction process to make sure to be a good neighbor, because we're all working towards the same goal, and we want to make sure to not only have the goal of proposing a community for the new residents of the Bonnet Hunt Club, but also the existing residents of the Mirabella community as well.
Thank you. I do have some comment cards, quite a few actually. So, in, may I please have Wendy Roth, then John Gustella, then Doris Noble, and may I please have your name and address for the record? And there's more after that, so I'll call the rest of the cards.
Do you want to go with your first?
I have more cards. I'm, we're going, I'm going in order than I got them.
I'm, I'm Doris Noble.
No, I'm Ruth, I'm sorry, Wendy Roth, John Gustella, and then Doris Noble.
Okay. I'm Wendy Roth, 105 Villanueva Place, Palm Beach Gardens in Mirabella. I realize that the M M A is not part of this discussion, but it's all part of the-
Excuse me, ma'am. Have you been sworn in?
Well, I did, yeah.
Were you sworn in?
Yeah.
Okay. And I didn't understand what you just said.
Okay. The, what she was talking about with Mirasol Master Plan, that it wasn't part of this hearing, now it's not on the, it's not on the agenda, but it is part of the overall development. And our major concern is that we're going to have people looking into our backyards. Mirabella's been there since the early 2000s, and all of a sudden, all of this development is coming on along, along Hood Road, and just massive development in our, in our estimation, that it's going to be like another PGA, and we want to be sure that we don't, that we have the proper buffers. And what's, what was supposed to have been there is not there, and I realize that they said that they're putting in more than the minimum landscaping, but that still might not be enough. I mean, we really don't want to look at people's houses. So, I think that we would, we would want to impress upon the council to be sure to have the M M A, the Mirasol Association do what they're supposed to do, or-
Okay.
So, we can have the proper buffer. We just don't want people looking in at us.
Thank you. John Gustella?
I'm John Gustella. I am the president of the Mirabella Master, Mirabella Homeowners Association. I live at 143 Sedona Way, Palm Beach Gardens.
Have you been sworn in, sir?
First, I'd like to thank-
Have you been sworn in, sir?
Nicole Plunkett and Don Herring.
Sir. Excuse me. Have you been sworn in, sir?
John, have you been sworn in?
I think I missed a swear.
Okay. Patty, would you swear him in, please?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to thank Nicole Plunkett and Don Herring.
Excuse me, sir. Can you please talk closer to the microphone?
Along with Natalie Crowe. Thank you very much for meeting with us this past Tuesday. Again, I have several residents from Mirabella here. Most of them are concerned with the, the privacy issues that occur when we have two-story homes back-to-back. So, the Master Association has sat down with us trying to have a timeline to restore the landscape buffer that is really not there. We're not sure what happened, but we're looking forward to them restoring that buffer, and I guess the question I really have for the council is, when that comes up in front of you, I'm going to ask the council to try to make them do more than the minimum to at least restore the buffer to the as-built when it comes to the amount of plantings, heights, and of the trees. I guess the planting minimums are 12 feet or 14 feet. We'd like to see them at least restored to the as-built. Many of my residents have come to me concerned about the overcrowding in the schools, and I, I don't know if you've considered that. I know that Nicole Plunkett has sent me some papers regarding the study with the school, but Marsh Point is a very attractive school. Many of the residents who moved here, moved here with small children for that school. It's an A-rated school. The concern is, there is some overcrowding now, and what's going to happen in the future with additional homes is a great concern. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Doris Noble? Doris, have you been sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm, I live at 241 Isle Verde, and my issue is also with the buffer, but it's a different type of issue with the buffer, but it, it's part of the M M A, which they did not complete their work when the construction was done on Mirabella. Behind my house, from north along the wall to south, there's flooding, and our concern is-
Excuse me, ma'am. Can you please speak closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Sure. When Mirabella was being built, the M M A never completed the work on the buffer. As a result, there's vast erosion on that wall, and we have flooding. And our concern is that once they start working on Bonnet, on Bonnet, the project, the road grading, we, it might increase the flooding. So, I think whoever is dealing with, with the issue needs to address the problem of the flooding from the north to the south by that wall prior to the grading of the road, and both sides need to be maintained so there will not be any more flooding. And also, one of my neighbors would like the two communities to work together on the plantings so that both sides will enjoy privacy.
Thank you. Okay, I have Louis Katz, Eileen Plax, Mark Richards, and then Al Blacks. Did I pronounce that wrong? Blake, sorry.
My name is Louis Katz. I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
I live with my wife at 101 Villanueva Place. Our property butts the wall between the two properties. We've had problems with invasive plants and trees, and some of it was initially put in by our developer. Thankfully, the hurricane did not, tornado rather, did not injure our house, but took all those trees down. So, now we have a beautiful backyard. The problem is that the property is elevated above our level of our backyard, so that the privacy issue is paramount in, in my particular location. And the other thing is that we feel that some kind of security should be granted to, between the two properties, because I've heard in other places where these short walls, which are presently there, can easily be gotten over with a small ladder. So, I, I don't know if this issue has been brought up at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Eileen is not going, and Mark? No. Not used to being in the area.
Thank you. Mr. Blake?
Blake, hi. How you doing?
Thank you.
I've been sworn in. Just to touch base on what Lou was talking about, in Mirabella, where the, where the wall is at, the wall only goes to so far, then you have a small four-foot fence. So, the buffer is a big issue for us, as residents there. We've been there long enough to see all of the construction schools up and down Hood Road. It's causing a problem because you, Hood Road is right in between PGA and Donald Ross. Hood Road is not the size of PGA Boulevard or Donald Ross. It's, it's just a small two-lane road that goes over the Turnpike and goes over 95. Now, what I understand is, there's always, you know, there's building going on for the access of 95. So, it's going to cause some congestion in the future, and we've had promises from other builders saying, no, you don't have to worry about it, but it is a concern, as, as for folks that live there, number one. Number two, I'd say every other day, you, you drive up and down Hood Road with all the construction going on, you see a lot of dead animals. And that is a issue that's been raised with quite a few of the neighborses, with the fish of wildlife, are they going to get, we have a lot of animals around that area. Ever since they started building where the United Technologies Building is at, right off Donald Ross, the animals are flocking everywhere. And it's actually, as a resident there, it's, it's pretty cool when you drive your bike up and down Jog Road and you see a deer. It is, it is pretty special, but that's going away, and we're talking about six acres, six small acres, right on the other side of a wall, that's about that high. So, the issue is going to be with the buffer area. We have to have some more guarantees that we feel comfortable with, because right now we don't.
Thank you. Natalie, I think you would like to address the buffer issue.
May I be heard first, please?
Oh. And you are?
Mark Richards.
Did I call your name?
You did it earlier.
Oh, sorry. Do you have a card for Mark Richards? I apologize.
Glad to hear.
Come to the podium, please.
Thank you. Yes, I was sworn in before.
Thank you. And please speak into the microphone.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Feel like I'm addressing an appellate panel. All right? All right. Would like to start out, my name is Mark Richards. I'm here with my wife.
And your address, please.
I am going to give you that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. We reside at 127 Sedona, which is at the beginning of where the construction is, is deemed to be, to start, and we will be facing two units directly in back of us. My next-door neighbor, Ms. Sedowski, sitting here, will have three and a half units.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you please speak into the microphone?
My, my apologies.
Thank you.
Okay. I like the ones that are clipped on better. Anyway, I would like to take issue with one statement that was made earlier, that was the M M A issue is separate, and respectfully, I would argue that it is inextricably intertwined with what the council has before it now. I am here tonight, as are probably most of the other residents, to highlight the need to protect the privacy in the Mirabella homes that are, aren't otherwise affected by the Bonnet Hunt Club. How high the trees will be, how far back they will be, so they will not look into my backyard. The wetness issue that was highlighted by one of the other gentlemen is also an issue for me. So, what we'd like to have this council is in approving a plan to preserve the privacy and how the buffer should be augmented, because it is clearly deficient. It is unhelpful at this point to look back 12 years and say, who screwed it up? Who didn't monitor it? And how it wasn't done? It's water under the bridge. But let's make it right now. And that's where that comes to you, because saying the M M A, well, they'll get around to do it, it'll be a cost, they're putting their heads in the sand, because they don't want to do it, because they don't want to spend the money. And it falls upon us to say, oh, well, you'll be affected, and that's too bad. And frankly, you're the one who can put pressure on them. You have the leverage. I don't. Now, so, in conclusion is, I'm advised the master has been less than responsible, responsive, and what can you do to protect our privacy with respect to the buffer, the burn, the wall, all that's in your, I mean, look, I have a view that this is being shoehorned here, but that, that ship has likely sailed. I got it. When we first were told of these plans, we were told of a dozen single-family residences. Now, it's 24 double, you know? So, we are left without recourse here.
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry. Thank you. And so, I do, I do see a common theme here, and it is the buffer, so I think Natalie has some information for us, and I think, Dawn, how are you this evening, Dawn? Thank you very much. Okay. Let's go for it.
Madam Mayor, we're all going to sort of chime in here, because there's actually two buffers that we're talking about. So, the first thing that I would like to, and this exhibit delineates, or at least clarifies what we're talking about, right now, we have two, two buffers. The buffer that several of the residents referred to, that is controlled by the Mirasol Master Association, is, let's see, how can I do this? Can you, is the one in red?
Well, the red, it indicates roughly where the wall is.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have a mouse, so. Okay. So, I guess I could just use the color. So, the existing red shows the Mirasol wall. So, it's, it's a little bit confusing, because the wall is actually not on the property line. So, what one may think when they see everything on the other side of the wall, which is the Bonnet, which appears to be the Bonnet Hunt Club, it is actually not. It is actually owned and required to be managed and maintained by the Mirasol Master Association. And I actually have some existing photos that-
If you could pull up the code folder, the code folder.
Just showing some existing conditions of, you can see on the other side of the wall, that, that, those are some existing conditions of the wall that came to staff's attention, and that is what we're talking about in terms of bringing this buffer into compliance. So, in order to ensure that this buffer is brought into the state that some of the residents refer to, that was done at install, staff is going to be working with the Mirasol Master Association to ensure that they come up with a planting plan that addresses the landscape buffer requirements per city code. It is up to the Mirasol Master Association to develop this plan, to show how it is going to be done, and it will be brought ultimately before the code enforcement magistrate, not the city council, to determine that. So, I do want to clarify that, because one resident mentioned that. But the, as I mentioned previously, the Mirasol Master Association has been working very cooperatively, but this, this now is in a completely separate process. It is in the code enforcement process, so it is up to the Mirasol Master to address the code enforcement action. They are going to address it by providing a timeline and a plan to meet the code requirement. So, that's really, that's the Mirasol buffer. Do want to address that. So, if we can now jump to the Bonnet buffer, which is immediately adjacent to the Mirasol Master. And so, this, this shows the, the house-to-house scenario, and several of the residents who are here tonight may or may not have had the opportunity to see this cross-section, so this cross-section does show that this is not a back-to-back home scenario. You have approximately 95 feet between the two homes that have been intentionally designed and provided, which includes for not just the Mirasol buffer, but the landscape buffer on the Bonnet Hunt Club side. The Bonnet landscape buffer width requirement was a minimum eight feet. The applicant exceeded that by two feet to provide for a 10-foot landscape buffer. The Bonnet Hunt Club applicant also provided minimum specs that were higher at install to go over and above the code. So, as you can see on these homes, that you have the existing berm, you have the existing six-foot wall, and although some of that landscaping is overgrown, overgrown, the wall is actually in, it's in pretty good condition. So, that existing six-foot concrete wall is in place through the code enforcement process. Many areas in that landscape buffer in Mirasol, we've learned, are not in compliance. That's going to be brought up to compliance. That's a separate process, but that is, you can see, the originally approved landscape plans through whatever means, whether it was through hurricanes or other weather events, or potentially some encroachments into that landscape buffer. Over time, things do change with the buffer. This happens all the time in the city. So, we just want to see it move forward and obviously meet the code standards. As you can see, the 10-foot landscape buffer, which I immediately addressed, and then in addition to that, you have the 10-foot rear setback, and then the actual backyards. The- The design of the Bonnet Hunt Club community had a front setback waiver, which pushed those front homes closer to the street to enhance that backyard. So really, at the end of the, at the end of the day, you have a 95-foot back-to-back scenario, certainly not a scenario where you have homes looking into the other backyards. There's a significant distance, the distance that has been intentionally been incorporated into the design. So that, I hope, clarifies some information.
Thank you. All right. I have all the cards. We've all been, we've, we'll get a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 222018 on second reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Matthew.
Okay, first, the homes on this property are two stories high, and they will be overlooking homes right next door. This is going to adversely impact on the privacy of the homes they overlook, and it's going to adversely affect their property values. I should disclose, I live in Mirabella, and these are my neighbors. Additionally, it's my understanding that the city has certain obligations to enforce the building code concerning the landscaping between Mirabella and the proposed development. The MMA may or may not have some obligations concerning this landscaping. The developer has certain obligations. The city has certain obligations to enforce the building codes concerning the landscaping between these two properties. Until these obligations are worked out, I don't think that we should approve these two-story homes on this property that will be overlooking and adversely impact upon the homes right next door. Second, I believe we need to preserve the quality of life by not overbuilding in the gardens. I believe this development is putting too many homes in too small of a space. The applicant is seeking seven variances. The applicant is seeking relief from a development standard that requires a 25-foot setback, they're requesting 20. The applicant is seeking relief from a development standard that requires a side setback of 7.5 feet. The applicant is requesting a seven-foot and a three-foot side setback. The applicant is seeking relief from a development standard that requires a minimum lot width of 65 feet, they're proposing 40 feet. The applicant is seeking relief from a development standard that requires a minimum lot size of 6,500 feet, they're proposing 4,400 feet. Now, I agree that variances are appropriate in certain circumstances, however, seven variances on a 24-home project isn't an audacious request. I believe that our development ordinances were put in place with a vision of Palm Beach Gardens that sought to prevent overdevelopment, and I believe that we should hold true to this vision that prevents overdevelopment, and I'm going to vote against this proposal.
No clapping, please. Thank you, Matthew. Are there, is there any more discussion?
Sure, I'd like to make a comment, if I may. I did drive through that property now, and it's really unfortunate how far, you know, far down it went in terms of its original allure and what the Bonnet Hunt Club used to be, but it is what it is today. When I first moved to Palm Beach Gardens 19 years ago, we bought our first home in the city, in the eastern part of the city, there was a property that was built behind our home, and we had some issues. And we had a lot of discussions about that, and took a few years for it to get resolved. And at that time, long before I ever had a suggestion or a thought of sitting up here and representing the city and the residents of the city, I said to myself, and I promised myself, that I would never allow a homeowner who lives in a home to have their properties negatively affected by development and growth. So as I look at the plan here today, if the builders or if someone had come to this council and said, "We want to build three-story condos, workforce housing, added density," I certainly would have been shocked and disappointed. This project, in my opinion, looks very much like the quality of the homes, the quality of the development in the neighborhood that will be similar to what we share throughout the city, including its most close neighbors. There's obviously going to be a concern by the neighbors, and we fully understand those concerns. And I don't think anyone up here or down there are going to allow this property to be built without the proper buffer, growth, landscaping, in order to ensure that those homes that are buffering that backyard are going to be protected and private. It's not going to be the same as it is today. Obviously, it won't. You're not going to have a lot of invasive species, it's not even lush foliage, it's just a lot of overgrown plants there right now. You're not going to have that, you're going to have something different. And sometimes that's a concern, and I completely understand it. But one thing I can say, every time we have an issue with the city, every time there's an item that comes up for discussion, every time the city is put in a position to do the right thing when it comes to these types of issues, I've never seen it fail. So I am going to support the project, and I'm going to make sure, and I'll promise all of you personally, as a neighbor, I don't live in Mirabella, live in PGA, but I have a lot of friends that live in, live in Mirabella, that we'll make sure that your properties will have a wonderful backyard that will be protected. And that's our job here, is to make sure that whatever properties come forward are going to be done tastefully and properly. I know it's a little bit of a disappointment to see something changed, and I understand that, but, you know, I think I can speak for all of us, and I'll allow the rest of the council to say their, their own two cents on this, but I think that you're going to be happy with the amount of work that the staff is going to do, that code enforcement's going to do, and that your developers will do as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll make one. I think Mark said it very well about the property, what's there now, and what has been proposed. I would also add that most of the developments in the city, I live in PGA, I can tell you the house next door to me is not more than 95 feet away. There's windows on the side of the house that look out at the house next to me. That's what living in a community is as opposed to living somewhere out in the country. Again, it's a change. I know that our department will work with code enforcement and make sure that things are the way that they're supposed to be. There are fines involved if they don't, there's a magistrate involved if they don't, and those fines rack up pretty quickly, so I would be willing to bet that Mirasol is going to proceed along that timeline as quickly as they can for financial reasons and for nothing else. So I'm going to vote in favor of the project.
Thank you. Carl?
I have a comment and a couple of questions as well. I'm your all's neighbor too, and I'm more affected by Hood Road because I live at Hood Military. So I see the growth, I see Hood Road because I drive it a lot, and for those of you that don't know me, I was a police officer in this city for most of my adult life. After I retired, I did my private business until I got asked to run for city council. But the reason why I said that is, in my, I guess I can say somewhat of an expert in the law enforcement area, when you have an area the way it is now, it's going to attract probably more of a criminal element with vagrants or squatters or whatever that might be in there now. And if it's developed, developed with a community like this, it's, you know, your criminal element's not going to be in there. By letting the land sit dormant like this, it's just going to, I don't see how, I personally, I'm not a public appraiser or a property appraiser, but this development might raise their property value. That's neither here nor there. But Natalie, can you, Doris did say something about the flooding, is there something that we know about that that wasn't discussed at the last meeting? And if so, is that being resolved?
In terms of the Bonnet Hunt Club project, the developer was required to meet the city's drainage code, to meet all minimum South Florida requirements. It was reviewed by the city engineer, and so I am not aware of any immediate issues regarding drainage on the Bonnet side if there is a flooding. I noted that too, and so we're happy to look into that if there is flooding. Certainly, that is an issue that can be carried into the compliance issue with the buffer because it did sound like it was on the MMA buffer that she was referring to because it was by the wall. So I did note that down, and if there's any issues pertaining to flooding, we can look into that. City engineer may chime in.
Just speak on that real quick. Mirasol, Mirabella, has a perimeter berm around their site required for flood retention, as well as this project will too. So there'll be perimeter berms on both sides to hold the water, and their discharge is to the north of Hood Road, and will eventually go into the Mirasol project through a series of culverts on the Hood Road side. So they'll be required to get a South Florida permit, and all the flood attenuation will be met.
So Doris, now that that particular flooding issue is on our radar, that will obviously be looked at and resolved as they move forward. And, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Lane's opinion that we don't want to overgrow in Palm Beach Gardens, but I also respect Councilmember Marciano's thought that if this was going to turn into some sort of apartment complex, or maybe even the, a quadplex with four, but this is 24 homes, and, you know, it's a little tiny pocket community, it's not going to be like at the apartment complexes that are at Hood and Central that were on the previous council's, you know, approval list, it wasn't on ours, but this is such a small community, and I think it fits in there nicely. And as your all's neighbor as well, we'll make sure we watch it closely to make sure that the security issues, most of you all were worried about the privacy, seem to be the number one issue, and I think the city is addressing that with Mirasol to make sure that your buffer is, for you people that back up to the wall, your privacy needs are met. So that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Carl.
Sure. I'm sorry, not, two seconds. And not that I'm going to ask this as part of the approval process, but we've spoken many times about putting up some type of monument there that would address the historical perspective. I know it's not a historical site, but I think that's, I keep thinking about it and would appreciate you doing something like that.
Mr. Matheson.
If I may briefly, I'm Steve Matheson, the attorney for the project and the applicant, and I do very much respect what Mark has said regarding the history of the Bonnet Hunt Club, having grown up here. We are committing, and we will make it a part of the record tonight, to place some recognition monument at the incredibly beautiful old banyan tree that we've saved as a team as a part of working through this site plan together with your staff. And it will recognize the Bonnet Hunt Club and someone we all called Uncle Bill when I was a kid. And I think that's important, it's important as a context for our city and its history. So consider that a commitment from the developer, and if you'd like to make it a condition, you're welcome to.
Thank you. I guess one last comment would be from me. The project itself that has been brought to us is a well-thought-out project. The buffer that is happening is actually wider on the Bonnet Hunt Club side than it is on the Mirabella side, and I'm confident that staff will work with the developer and the MMA and Mirabella to make sure that the buffer is as it's supposed to be. There is, I would like to say that by adding 24 homes to the city of Palm Beach Gardens is not in any way going to affect the value of your home. People want to live in the gardens, we have a 94% approval rating in the gardens, and that's people who tell other people, "Please move to the gardens, it's a wonderful place to live." The city, the staff, the council, we take our roles very seriously, and we would not put a project in place if we thought it was going to hamper, hinder, negatively impact anyone else. I realize that there are several waivers, and waivers are there because you can't always know what's going to come in front of you. One of the waivers is moving the front setback from 25 feet to 20, which means they're going to move the house closer to the street so there's more of a backyard, so that there's even more space between the back of a house in Bonnet to the back of the house in Mirabella. So I think what's been proposed in front, what has been proposed has been well-thought-out, and I do see the coordination between all of the parties, which is very important. And I do know that code enforcement is aware, so those things will happen. And on that note, I would like to end the discussion.
Matthew?
Okay, I thank my fellow councilmembers for your thoughtful consideration, and I can count to four. I think the dispute isn't with the quality, the quality of this project is great, the problem is it's going to impact the people who live next door. As far as ensuring compliance, I come from the old school of trusting but verifying. I know there was a meeting, it did not go well from what I've heard. And in terms of ensuring compliance, I mean, I've been back there a lot, and it just does not look very good. I can tell you that it looks like this is going to be built, and I can assure the neighbors at Mirabella, if you have any issues, if there's any code violations, if there's anything I can do for you, you know where I live, come on by.
Thank you. Okay, so may I have, I'm going to end the discussion, and all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, that was on ordinance 22, we need a vote on resolution 20, resolution 58, correct? All right, may I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion to accept resolution 582018.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I don't think we need any more discussion, so all those in favor?
Would you entertain one question?
I'm sorry, so the public comment part is over now, we're actually taking a vote?
I was waiting till your vote finished, I didn't want to interrupt you. In light of the pictures that were brought up here, is there any reason why the trees could not be made as high? My apologies. Any reason why the trees on the, that you have on the Mirabella side could be the same height as the trees on the Bonnet side?
Sir, you'll have to speak into the microphone, please, when I put the mic on.
Okay, I've been guilty of this before, and I apologize. I beg your indulgence. I'll repeat the question. I'm looking the first time at this drawing here, and it has the Mirabella trees on the berm at a particular height. It has the Bonnet Hunt Club trees significantly shorter. This lady said, "Well, they've increased them by two feet." If you look at the difference between the heights of the trees, and Mr. Marciano is very impressed by saying, "Quality, it's night and day." And there's a, I mean, that's something that you guys, I agree collaboratively between the council, the developer, and the association, that should be able to resolve this. This isn't rocket science, but there's got to be somebody that kicks a little bit, and you're the kicker. We feel like we're the kickies at this point.
Thank you very much. And remember, this is just an illustration.
Okay, but again, if it was a foot difference, I wouldn't be arguing.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so there is no more discussion, we're taking a vote. May I, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries four to one. Okay, we are on to resolution 61. May I have the clerk read the title, please? Actually, why don't you take a minute? We'll let the audience file out. Thank you all for coming. You're welcome.
Hold on a second.
Where do I land? Third down. No, that's not there. Third down. That third. The third, the third. Right, thank you. I found it. No, I found it, thank you. When they do the third thing.
Sorry about that, they can't seem to figure out why I'm coughing.
It's gotten better.
Okay. Resolution 61, may I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 61, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to allow for limited outdoor display areas in front of Building A Publix within the Town Center District Parcel C of the Alton Plan Community Development, PCD, located on the northeast corner of the Donald Ross Road and Alton Road intersection, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. I'll open the hearing. Any expertises?
I believe I spoke to Ken about this.
I don't believe I have. Okay. Carl has left the building for the moment, so have you been sworn in?
I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Ken Toomah, Urban Design Kill Day Studios, my address is 610 Clematis Street, and I have been sworn in. This presentation will be about four slides. The next one will be a little bit longer, this one will be about four slides. So the purpose of this presentation, and the purpose of the request that is before you, is there is a Publix coming to Alton Town Center. In fact, if you drive by Alton Town Center, that Publix is almost done, and hopefully it will be open prior to Thanksgiving. So the goal is for that Publix to be open prior to Thanksgiving. So quickly, the subject site, which I know you all are aware, is located within Alton. It's identified on the screen in yellow. It's a 40-acre site. As part of the overall approval, there were design guidelines that are part of the site which govern the regulations before you. The site has been part of the City of Palm Beach Gardens since 1990, was part of a DRI and part of an overlay. But what is before you tonight is here in Building A, where the grocery store is proposed, is a Publix. The request before you is to allow for, oops, excuse me, here's the site plan. The request before you in Building A is to allow for outdoor, I'm sorry, excuse me, to allow for periodic outdoor display of products, pumpkins, items that are done on a regular basis, annual plants, potentially storm supplies. Your staff has significant amount of conditions for this, more particularly have allowed specifically to allow for ADA access. All the items will need to be brought in by 11:00 PM, with those that are allowed to be brought inside the store. And there are other supplies that are being proposed. You're going to see, identified here in front of you in the plan view, is the location of those items. The outdoor displays will meet the ADA requirements. They won't block any doors. They'll can be brought inside, as I said earlier, at the end of each business day. And the areas are identified here in blue on the screen are areas where those outdoor displays could be, and then the area identified in red is where the ADA access is, so there is complete walking and the ability to have access around those items. We agree with all the conditions of approval. Those conditions of approval identify, example, identify when storm supplies can be placed. For example, your staff has put a condition which says prior, no prior to five days of the cone of influence in the City of Palm Beach Gardens, then we would be able to put those items out there. So these items typically do occur at most stores. The thought process here is let's regulate them and get them right, since we have a brand-new center starting from day one. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff had anything to add?
No additional staff presentation. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 61, 2018.
I have no, thank you. I have no cards on this, so may I ask for a motion in a second, please?
May I have the way adopt Resolution 61, 2018?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to Resolution 64. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 64, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a sign program for the Alton Town Center Commercial Retail Project, located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Donald Ross Road and Alton Road, within Parcel C Town Center, District of the Alton Plan Community Development, PCD, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing and ask for any expertises?
None.
Hearing none? I know the petitioner has been sworn in. How many slides do you have now?
This one's got a couple more. A couple more. Good evening. This one will be about five to six minutes.
Okay.
So, good evening, Ken Toomah.
Got my caffeine?
Again, of Urban Design, yes ma'am. Urban Design Kill Day Studios here today on behalf of Alton Town Center. We have our whole team assembled out here, including our landscape architect, the owner's representative, and our team is here also. The purpose of tonight's discussion is the signage of the Alton Town Center. As part of the development order, both within the original PCD and also as part of the site plan approval process, we are required to come before you to show the signage that's being proposed for the subject site. There are a couple waiver requests that are part of this application. So again, on the screen in front of you is a subject site, it is 40.8 acres, part of the Alton PCD. The history of the site in front of you for today, in essence, has the design guidelines, part of the DRI, a requirement to come before you for a signage application. Here's the approval for the site, and just for some quick updates, Building A is almost complete. Building P O and P 2 and Q are very close to completion and construction, and as you drive along Donald Ross Road, you'll notice that there are significant buildings occurring along the front of the site. This project is moving forward very fast, and is a very unique design, and we are very proud of it, and Publix will be opening here very shortly.
This is the 18th green.
So here's the pictures of the construction. These are actually a couple weeks old, but just to give you an idea of what's occurring and some of the design characteristics, the paver patterns, the parking, the brick pavers down the center. This building is actually the Publix building, which you wouldn't even notice today because it looks a lot more like a Publix. And then here are some of the other bays that are being constructed. But if you get the chance, it's worth driving out there. It is a full-bloom construction site, and is really interesting to watch on what's happening and how quickly it comes together, but also how it's being built to code and the landscaping that's a part of it. So the requests that is before you tonight, though, are for ground signs, directory signs, and directional signs, drive-through signs, and wall signs. We are proposing five ground signs. Those are the ground monuments that you see. Those are allowed by your code. We are requesting that four of them be a multi-tenant and one be a gas station sign. Identified in front of you in blue are the locations of those signs being proposed. This is Donald Ross Road, where my, where our mouse is, and then this is the main road coming into Alton, Alton Road. So those signs are 10 by 15 feet, which are consistent with the code. And here's a look at what those, what those signs look like. The base is a three-foot height base. There is the Alton identification on one side, and then you'll notice five tenant signs on each of those four signs as they're spread out throughout the project. This is a Mesa beige cement. It's a pretty neat look. The gas station sign is a bit different. It is a gas station sign, so it does have electronic copy. Here's the gas station sign being proposed. Again, same base design, same concept with the Corten steel and the signage, but this does have the electronic copy as allowed for a gas station. Directory signs, and I will, might get directory and directional signs incorrect, so I'm going to try to keep it straight. Directory signs, directory signs are intended to show the pedestrian where things are, and those look like this type of sign, where it has locations of tenants and a map of where they are located. So the directory signs are located here in red, in the highly pedestrian areas. Their intent is to allow for people to walk from building to building and be able to figure out where they're going, because there are a significant amount of tenants and smaller spaces within here. We are proposing five directory signs. Those directory signs are six feet high by six and a half feet wide and have a copy area of 16 square feet. The code allows us up to 16 signs. We are requesting five signs, but we need to have two waivers for those signs. The first waiver, the first waiver requires that these signs be located within 25 feet of a building. Well, in this case, we're putting them in the pedestrian areas where they make sense, so the waiver is allowing us to not place them within 25 feet of the building. The second part is, we're proposing to have two faces on the sign, so we could put it in the middle, so it's one on one side and one on the other. We have a significant amount of justification for this, including, and staff's a good suggestion to include 36 additional hanging potted plants in the area of orchids. Staff is supporting this waiver. Directional signs, a directional sign is when you're driving, and it's the thing that says, go this way, go that way. The directional signs are 36 that are allowed by code. We are requesting 10 signs. The signs are intended direct motorists to tenants. They're five and a half feet high by five feet wide. Here's what a sign looks like. Again, the same consistent design theme, the Mesa beige cement with the Corten steel and the lettering. The proposed sign, we're requesting a 16-square-foot copy area. This is a waiver. The code allows for four square, four square feet of copy area, but as I said earlier, we're requesting many less signs than we would be allowed to. There is significant justification with additional landscaping through the subject site. There is a tremendous amount of landscaping being proposed that wasn't proposed as part of the original approval, including 47 live, 47 more live oaks, 15 broad, 15 additional live oaks, cathedral oaks, gumbo limbo's, eagleton holly, and a bunch of beauty leaves. So a significant upgrade on the landscape has occurred. Staff supports this request. Drive-through signs, we are requesting drive-through signs. There are three drive-through signs proposed. They are four feet in height and two feet in width. They comply with the city's code requirement, but one of our tenants is a Starbucks. So Starbucks has two menu boards. We are requesting the ability to, a waiver for those two menu boards. But an important fact about those additional menu boards, there is a square footage cap of copy area, which is 20 square feet per menu board. When you add the proposed menu boards for the Starbucks, we're actually still under that. Now, to give you an idea of what those menu boards look like, it's pretty neat. The concept is still consistent with the Alton design of the Corten steel, but this is actually a electronic board where you actually see the person, you know, you get your coffee, and the company's look at the person, and then you'll see the menu board here, again, with that same kind of look for the Corten steel. We are also providing, as a great idea, we're adding eight electric vehicle chargers, getting prepared for the future as people make that transition. Staff supports this waiver. There are wall signs on each building. Those wall signs are mostly, are consistent with your city code. There are 36-inch-high letters proposed for Building A, Building O, Building S, and Building T. Every other building are 24-inch-high letters, again, consistent with your code. They are all compliant. There will be no signs facing south, towards Atlantico. We are requesting a waiver, excuse me, and that waiver, we are requesting a waiver for, for the ability to have two signs. In a mixed-use project, you're allowed to have a sign in the front, in the back, if you're fronting a major road. So for example, on Donald Ross Road, obviously we're fronting a major road, and we're able to have a sign in the front and a sign in the back, because your parking's in the rear, but your front isn't in the, in the, in the back. Same thing happening down the middle road here, but this middle road doesn't meet the definition of an arterial road. So we are requesting a waiver, and staff is supporting that waiver, so Building M could have a sign down the main drive and then have a sign in the back of it where people are going to park. That occurs in Building A, L, M, Q, R, and S, T. Significant amount of additional landscaping being proposed. We've modified the parking lot to add additional green space, something called a wing diamond, which is basically allowing where the tree diamonds are to be bigger, so trees have a much better success rate, and staff supports this waiver request. As I said earlier, a significant amount of additional landscaping and a significant amount of trees are being proposed for the site, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, that was very well done. I will, does staff anything, have anything to add?
No additional comments. That was a very thorough presentation. It would be duplicative. Staff does recommend approval of Resolution 64, 2018.
I appear to have no cards on this one, so I will close the hearing and bring it back for a discussion. May I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion to move Resolution 64.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Oh, looks like no discussion, which actually I think is very, very well done, means the presentation was thorough, it means staff's presentation was thorough. We had a good, good discussion during our, I did anyway, during the agenda review, and the waivers are necessary. As I said earlier, waivers are in place for a reason, because we, we can't design everything immedi, first, and then go from there. You know, new things happen, new sign structures happen, buildings face different ways, so alrighty. On that note, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, just for deference, for a second, I didn't say this during my presentation, I have to thank Joanne here, who has really pushed the developer to do a great job, and these signs are going to look great, and we look forward to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joanne, thank you. Okay, so we are on to, hold on, I've got to turn pages here. Are we on to Resolution 53?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Resolution 53, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the appointment of regular and alternate members to the Art and Public Places Advisory Board, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All right, may I bring this back for a discussion?
Sure. Can I speak?
I need a motion in a second? Or just this, just discussion and then a motion?
Yes, ma'am, just discussion, you need to, because the motion will have to include the names of the members.
Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I would like to nominate Zavin Kazin for the Art and Public Places Committee. He's a 30-year resident of Palm Beach Gardens. He's maintained a business in the North End for over 25 years. He's active on the governing body of his HOA, who I'm sure would all support his nomination from the entire HOA. He was responsible for architecture for his HOA. He's an artist who sculpts and paints and has a great eye for art. Even as an alternate member of this committee, he's come to every meeting, and he's never missed a meeting. And when he's come to these meetings and had the opportunity actually to sit on the dais, he didn't immediately shoot off his mouth. He took the time to listen and learn from the others, and when he did ask questions, they were good questions. Now, Zavin's the owner of a well-known haircutting salon, where he performs services for many of the most prominent residents in our community, including Jack and Barbara Nicholas, who I'm sure would vouch for him if asked to do so. He's, having performed honorably and diligently on this committee, we don't want to keep him as an alternate. We don't want to pass him over in favor of someone who's never served on the committee. Now, Zavin is having some health issues, which I talked about with Natalie, and he's taking chemo and radiation for his liver cancer. But to show his dedication, he was scheduled to have cancer surgery on his liver, and he arranged it so that he wouldn't miss the Art and Public Places meeting. He was diagnosed with stage IV liver cancer, which, there is no stage V, that's death. His wife told me how grateful they were that he was appointed to the AIPP Committee, because he really, really values it, and it gives him something to live for. This is a time where we can feel good about doing what's right and permitting one of our longtime active and well-known residents the opportunity to serve our committee. Now, I was informed that there's going to be other vacancies coming up soon, and the other candidates will have an opportunity to serve on the committee as alternates now, and they'll give them a chance to get their feet wet and know what they're doing when they take one of the spots that are currently vacant. So I'd like to nominate Zavin Kazin to serve on the AIPP. I know it'll mean a lot to him and his family.
Rochelle, anything?
I'd like to hear. I'd like to hear the rest of the council.
Carl, any recommendations?
Well, I didn't know anything about Zavin, I was, I'm sorry. Thank you for reaching one. I'd kind of looked at the regular members, and Zavin is currently an alternate, so I really didn't have an opinion on leaving it as it is.
All right, so here, let me, let me go first.
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to reappoint Eileen Gerber through 9:30. I would like to reappoint Eileen Gerber through 9:30, 20. Robert Ko, reappoint him through 9:30, 20. I would like to appoint Taylor Uer to the second alternate. And Matthew, you've given a good, a good plea for Zavin. I just hope that he's up to the task. So I think there is a, is there a vacancy with Vincent Castaneda?
If Zavin were to move up to the vacancy...
No, there's no vacancy for Vincent.
Okay. So Gail Kopich, I'd like to see her on the council. Is there a term that she'd be finishing for, or she would be?
Alternate.
An alternate.
She could go in as first alternate if Zavin moved into the vacancy position.
So let's do that. Let's put Gail Kopich as the first alternate, and we'll move Zavin into, into, what, that term would be 9:30, 19?
9:30, 19.
Okay. How's everybody feel about that?
I appreciate Matthew's comments. I don't know Zavin, but I hear good things about him, so thank you for recommending, and I would support Robert Ko, Eileen Gerber, Zavin Kazin as regular members, Gail Kopich as first alternative, and Taylor Uer as second alternate member.
Second, Mark.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, on the, so we're good, we can go to Resolution 54 now, right? Okay. Resolution 54, may I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 54, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the appointment of regular and alternate members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. I would actually like to reappoint Shelley Rowe to the board. I would like to appoint Andrew Heim to a vacancy as a regular member, and I would like to see Matthew Zudins made alternate, first alternate, and Dane Leitner made second alternate. Anyone have any discussion on that?
No, I'm good. I know Matthew Zudins. I think he would be great as, as an alternate, and ultimately maybe moving into a position when one comes open.
I like seeing the alternates attend and be elevated to regular members, so I definitely support Andrew moving up to regular member.
Correct. Yeah, and it's important for the alternates to attend the meetings, because you never know who's gonna come and who's not gonna come. Plus, you learn when you're there, and it gives you more experience for when you do get appointed. Okay, so I think we all are in, on the same page with that, so all those in favor? Oh, wait, Mark?
No.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carries. Resolution 55, appointments and reappointments to the planning, oh, sorry, Patty, I'm, I'm taking your role. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 55, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the appointment of regular and alternate members to the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you. I would like to see Randy Hansen reappointed by waiver. He is the only architect that would be on the board, and we haven't had any other architects that have applied, so I'd like to see him reappointed by waiver. I would like to see Mike Panzak reappointed, Mark Cohen reappointed. I'd like to see Chris Oftedel appointed to a regular term, and Eric Sella appointed. He is actually a civil engineer, which is something we need on there also by our guidelines. And then I would like to see Chelsea Reed as first alternate, and Tim Kopich as second alternate.
I think that's...
Any discussion?
I think that's a, a good...
Good mix?
...way to do it. That, that board specifically has to have a certain makeup...
Correct.
...of, of specialty, so it seems like doing that would probably be the best way to go.
With as much turnover on, on probably the most important board, having Randy as an architect back on the board, I think, is important, even though we are in a city that pushes for term limits, but there's nobody else that has his qualifications, so, and he handles himself very well on the dais, so I'm happy to offer a waiver for Randy.
And as I said earlier, it is, the first alternate and second alternate are very important, because there are countless times where the, the meetings aren't full, they all, no one, not all are attending, and the first and second alternates do sit in, so I would like to see that. And for those of you that don't know, Chelsea Reed, Chelsea, why don't you stand up? This is Chelsea Reed. Thank you very much. So now, may I have a motion or a vote? Are we voting now? What are we doing, Max?
I don't think you made a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the appointments as listed by the mayor.
Okay. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Alrighty. We're winding down. How nice is this? All right, we are now at the part of our agenda, which is, last, last page. Too many pages here. This is a long agenda, but we got through it very, relatively quickly. Thank you very much, all. Yep, and we are at council discussion. I do know that there's some announcements. Mark, did you want to announce the TOD?
I do. You know, we had a lot, a lot of discussion about the TOD, how it may impact the center part of our city, PJ Boulevard, Military Trail, the potential for a train station moving in. I hope all the people that were here earlier took one of these, and if everyone here would take one home with them and make sure that their neighbors know about it, this is an opportunity for us as a city to be able to get together, to learn a little bit about what can happen, what may develop in our city as we go forward. It's gonna be not something that we're gonna be up here for...
Yeah, we won't, we won't see it, because we'll be term limited out.
But our job is to make sure that people understand what might happen, what can come, so we get as much public input as possible. So, you know, the one, the comment I thought was maybe we shouldn't do it here, but I know it's free for us to do it here as opposed to elsewhere. But, you know, just, just have your friends and neighbors, please, come. I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for people to give some input.
Thank you.
Thursday, October 25th, 6 o'clock PM.
You want to repeat that?
Thursday, October 25th, 2018, 6 o'clock PM.
Thank you.
Informal meeting.
I'd also like to remind everybody that the Green Market moves back to here this Sunday, and I hope you all join us as we celebrate the 7th, 17th anniversary of the Green Market. This is also Fire Safety Month. We have some cute little handouts here. November is honoring our veterans, and I hope, I know we will have a council meeting for them, but please mark on your calendar. We have a very busy weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, to honor our veterans next month, and I hope you all will participate. We have a wonderful celebration here at the Green Market and in, in Veterans Plaza. And I do know that our toy drive is already starting. I know I'm probably jumping the gun just a little bit, so our toy drive here that the fire department does a wonderful job of, has, is starting to collect toys, so just put that in the back of your mind, because it's probably cheaper to buy toys now than it is in December. And I think...
You can't buy them at Toys R Us, you have to go online.
That's true. Does the city attorney have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so, anything else anybody wanted to say? We're adjourned, eight, at nine o'clock.